This is Tonye Clipper.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Now it is.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, Ms. Volas, Student of the Year on report.
Good evening, everyone. For my first update, the Stock for Nikhil Youth, the Stock for Nikhil, Nikhil Badlani Foundation Youth Advisory Board was awarded with the top 10 projects in New Jersey by the New Jersey Association of Student Councils.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Last week, the Air Force Junior ROTC Cadet hosted their boot camp at the West Orange High School called Operation Avalanche. They were assisted by cadets and active programs like Rutgers New Jersey. Cadets learned skills in combatives, first aid, drill, orienteering, teamwork, and more. Students were able to compete in their flights, and there was also parent participation. The West Orange Student Council also won the Synergy Youth Conference Award Peace Grant. Co-president Brett Zilligson presented a presentation on the West Orange Green Ribbon Week and was able to win that title for West Orange. We won $500 for the mental health space by Mr. Zakella and donated $500 to the C.J. Morgan Foundation. Lastly, the poetry at loud competition was hosted at West Orange High School, and Junior Nuhah Kausar won the competition and will be representing West Orange High School at regionals in February.
Fantastic. All right, Dr. Casco.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Before we get into some recognitions and some other interesting reports we have for you, I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of an update. It's been a bit of busy, busy number of months. I could, I could stay up here for hours and just, and just literally recount all the just amazing events that I've attended and amazing things that I've seen our kids doing and our staff doing, the awards. I mean, it seems like every time I turn around, I'm seeing another one of our students or another one of our schools or staff members win some form of award, championships, first places. If, if you're not on social media, and I can tell you that outside of professional purposes, I'm not, but I obviously use it for professional purposes, and even if you're not really a big fan of social media, I really encourage you to, to get onto Twitter, to get onto Instagram, because it really is an amazing way to stay up to date on all the things that are going on, not only on the district level, what our board is up to, what our teachers are doing in the classroom. So if you haven't taken a foray into that, I really encourage you to do that. You know, obviously, we have our Facebook page as well. It's a great way to stay informed. But as we've transitioned into the second half of the year, I just wanted to provide a brief update on how we're coming along with some of our district goals. As you may recall, we made both communication and perception, you know, of our, you know, within our schools and of our schools focuses for this year. And we recently closed out, before the new year, that was the survey that we put out to the parent community relative to, to gather, we called it a satisfaction survey relative to communication and perception. And we have finally closed that out at a recent meeting of the principals. I did share those results with the principals and talk a little bit about, you know, kind of, for lack of a better word, my expectations for how I wanted them to really look at that data and analyze that data and really drill down into the school and the classroom level in terms of what we were getting from parents at different grade levels and different schools and how we could improve our communication. So that continues to be a, a very, a primary focus of ours. We've really, obviously, I think, I think the district did an excellent job, even before I got here, in terms of getting out word about the many things that are going on, but we've really tried to make more of a concerted effort to kind of get our story and our brand out about our district beyond the school district. I'm happy to report that we've had several, several of our programs and our accolades that were included in the New Jersey Department of Education statewide broadcasts that go throughout the state. You know, for up to me, every time I open that, that broadcast up, I want to see West Orange in there. But we've had our special education activity that was recognized. We had a science program, the climate summit that they host was in there. And then, of course, we had the story recognizing our, our excellent high school principal, Mr. Moore, for his award. Relative to perception and also kind of student and staff climate, we are in the process, good work of Mr. Mendez and the Diversity Equity and Access Committee, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as part of our report. We are putting the final touches on a survey, a climate survey, that's going to go out to all of our staff as well as our students. We're ensuring that we're having that reviewed by various different groups of stakeholders, including our multi-stakeholder diversity committee, but also our teachers as well. And we'll be launching that soon, and we're actually really excited, I think, to, you know, we've heard a lot of hypotheses about how people feel about our schools and about our environment. And so we're actually really looking forward to seeing the data itself and seeing how that matches up against what people perceive and are saying. And whatever it may say and whatever data it may yield, we're going to face courageously and, and in a safe space where we learn to move forward for the best interest of all of our kids and, and all of our community members. That also connects also to our staff health, mindfulness and wellness. We are in the process of, there's only so much time in the day for committees. I mean, we've been kind of, you know, taking at, hitting at health and mindfulness from kind of different perspectives, whether it is, and I see some of our folks who met with us through the allergy awareness committee, and, you know, we're happy to have the first reading of that policy. And so we've been kind of coming at it a bit, kind of piecemeal, but I have been speaking with the board and some of my administration about launching an actual committee. You see, I'm of the mindset when it comes to committees, that I don't just like to start a committee for the sake of a committee. When I, we put together a committee ensuring that it's, that it's a sustainable committee, that it's a committee that's going to perpetuate, and then it's going to actually be a committee that can get work done, not just to say we had a committee. So I don't jump into committees quickly. I want to make sure that when we form them, that they're really effective and, and well put together, but that is in the works as well. And finally, relative to grant writing, we have secured several grants this year, working with our NJBSA School Board's grant writer, who recently called a report of relevant opportunities, which now we are kind of looking further into to see which ones we want to go after. What we're focusing on right now specifically is our media centers. I actually just spoke with Nancy Mullin, our supervisor today, about bringing together the district media specialists to work with our grant writer to really identify needs within their spaces, to transform the spaces into more modern, modern, you know, learning spaces and workspaces for kids. You know, so in, in terms of where we are chronologically in the school year, we're, you know, we've moved into the scheduling process in the high school. And I've asked a group of administrators to come together and really look at the scheduling process district-wide to ensure that we have a cogent approach to that district-wide. I think in the past, we've tended to operate a bit siloed in schools, in grade divisions, and we really need to be seeing those transition points and ensuring that key communications are going out, not only to students, but also to parents at those points, so they have the information they need when they need it to make decisions, not only about that year, but that are also more forward-reaching into high school. So that's in the process. And our new board, with our two new board members, we are off to a really busy start in the new year. We have a lot of work to do with policy. Ms. Trig Scales will talk a little bit later about her committee report and how we're moving forward with that. We're going to be dusting off our referendum proposal, and we'll be doing a work session in March for that. And we have our Herculean task of putting together a balanced budget. And just to kind of close, before we get into our recognitions, I would just like to kind of foreshadow the budget process, just a touch, and just kind of frame out for the public, really, the, the challenges of balancing a budget in the, the modern age in public schools. As you know, our budgets are capped by the state at 2% of the, of the, of the tax levy. Our, our budget will increase more than three times what we can levy, just by virtue of what the increase in the benefit costs and a conservative estimate as to what a salary increase would be. And that's not unique to West Orange, that's simply just the upside-down funding conundrum of school budgeting. What it means is, is that moving forward, we're really going to need to think creatively and outside of the box, because that's not going away. And I think it's just really important for communities to understand that, you know, for years, we built budgets not capped, and for years, we built budgets with perhaps more stable benefit costs. And what we have is fantastic, but it was built and funded in a different financial time. And that's a conundrum. That's a genuine conundrum which we face and which every school district faces. Not really having the opportunity to really bring in other funding streams, yes, we can do grants, but grants don't fund annual revolving costs like, for example, benefits or salaries. They're really more project-based. At a certain point in time, we're going to need to make tough decisions. We're going to need to understand and come to a consensus as to what our priorities are as, as a district and what services and programs and staff are crucial to our core mission, whatever that may be. But it's important that the, the public recognize that, that, that exists, that conundrum exists. But, I got to tell you, we're going to make it work. Always, we're always going to be optimistic. Where there's a will, there's a way, okay? And we're going to do it without compromising the quality of what we do here, and to that, I, I think the board and I are, are very much committed. So that's just a little bit from me. It'd been a while since I spoke to you. I didn't say anything at the reorder meeting, so I've had a lot pent up in me that I had to share with, with my constituents, so I appreciate it. Now, for the really good stuff, we get to celebrate some wonderful staff and students, and I'm going to go up to the, to the mic up there. So it's all about the kids, right? And I, I've been, I tell kids almost on a daily basis when I run into them, when they sometimes like apologetically ask for my attention, or we really wish you could do this for us, say, hey, I'm here for you, right? But, and it's great, because our kids do amazing things. And so, and, and our staff as well, tremendous. So we have some, some folks here from the high school. And so, and I'm not exactly sure whether it was Ms. Hedlam who's there here, our SAC here, Ms. Jackie Hedlam. We also have our Student Assistance Counselor, Mr. Amadeo Chirchilla, and Assistant Principal from the high school, Leslie Chung. Let me tell you about these folks before I talk about the kids. I mean, I tell you, you know, Ms. Chung, and Ms. Chung is here because her doctoral study's on the agenda as well, but Ms. Chung does some great work with kids at the high school. Let me tell you about these SACs over here. These folks are unbelievable, and that's a big building. And as we know, our kids have a lot of needs, but those are two amazing, amazing people and amazing staff members who are doing great work with our kids to keep them in a good frame of mind, been, had an opportunity to go down to their office and see the stuff they do down there, it's tremendous. Now, I can't remember, did I pass this off to you, or did you pass it off to me, the locker slam?
So I, we did it at big time, I organized it.
Yeah.
I feel like our, our people should get involved, that's how we're trying to make it happen.
Right, oh, you see? Great minds think alike, right? So, now you may not really, but January was, was human trafficking awareness, and I don't know how much, you know, you follow this, you know, this kind of, this topic, but it's, it's, to me, it's, it's a topic with which I identify very much. It's a major issue in our world, in our country, and so I was really happy to see that we were bringing some awareness to it. And, and so Ms. Hedlam and I kind of, kind of latched on at the same time, but more importantly, we had some kids. And so, you know, if I could just have our staff and our kids who are here, and they were our, our peer leaders that got involved, come on, y'all, come on up. And actually, I'd like to hear from, come on up, we'll give them a hand, yeah. Come on up, kids. I actually want to hear from y'all kids. Come on up here. Tell us a little bit about, and tell us about the work you did with the locker slam.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Dorsey, and I'm a senior here at West Orange. So basically, what we did was, there was about, I'll say 12 of us, as students. So with the locker slams, we put the, there was basically magnets, and we slammed one of the lockers, as you can see. And all of them had like a different saying, so this one had, there are more slaves today than ever, ever before. So we basically slammed the magnet onto the locker, and then the students will have the opportunity to just read it and just see what it means for human trafficking.
So just like to present these awards, these certificates to you. I know not all of you are here today, Victoria, Amaya, Sisson, here you are, congratulations. Brian. There's, there's our man Kyle, congratulations Kyle. Leslie Fina. Leslie, congratulations. We have a couple here for our staff. Ms. Hedlam. The rest of these.
Dr. Casco?
Yes, ma'am.
May we shake their hands?
Indeed, indeed, absolutely. Come on up, kids, board would like to, yeah, come on. Is that right? Okay, good, good, good. Stay, remain optimistic. And our, our, just as a, as a sidebar, since I have your attention, working with our SACs, we submitted a, I think it was an $8,000 grant for vaping education, so we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed on that and hoping to, to earn that grant that would come in handy in our, our prevention efforts. The second award goes to one of our staff members, a Liberty staff member, an art teacher. And this particular staff member, I'll put my glasses on here, the 2018-19 Youth Art Month Award winner. So the Youth Art Award is created to emphasize the value of art education for all youth and to encourage support for quality school art programs, which is essentially sponsored by the Council for Art Education. And the total number of art teachers in New Jersey, 3,175, and I think you were one of two from New Jersey? One of two teachers that, that received the award out of 3,175? That's, that's pretty darn good, isn't it? And over, and a million and a half students taking art. And so, I want, we know, I've, I've received word that, that Ms. Lopez, who's here, if you'll come join us, we'll give a round of applause, Ms. Lopez. I received word from Mr. Klempt, the principal, that Ms. Lopez was the recipient of, and this is a national award, the Claire Flanagan Award for her service in promoting art education. So we wanted to recognize your recognition and congratulate you. You're welcome. Of course. And so if you plan to come into board meetings, get used to the recognition, because, Ash, we have so much to, to be, be proud of, and we're going to really make an effort to showcase that moving forward at board meetings. So I believe now we'll have Mr. Mendez come up to the podium with a little preamble. Right, so, so last year, before I got here, there was an initiative to, to form a multi-stakeholder committee of staff, parents, administrators. Do we have any students on the committee? That may be something we want to think about, actually, but that's for, for, but, but to come together and to really, you know, what does equity mean? What does diversity mean in our community? And so, you know, we began to explore that. And, you know, we wanted to provide an update. The committee actually meets tomorrow here over at the board office, so we're going to really continue and do some work. But we wanted, at this public meeting, because the next one won't be until the 10th, to provide an update on some of the work that's going on. I got to tell you, I think you're going to be really, I'm excited by the work that's coming out of the committee. And again, we're not hurdling head, headstrong into the work, right? We're being thoughtful, we're being deliberate about the way we're planning, and I think to be deliberate in the planning on the front end then facilitates the work as it moves forward. So, Ms. Mendez, why don't you come up and give us a little update?
Good evening. The Diversity Equity and Access Committee met earlier this year, and we have our next meeting again tomorrow. As a group, we have three subcommittees, and each of those subcommittees will be meeting tomorrow to break out into their small groups. One is the Hiring and Intention, the other one is Curriculum Instruction, and the other is Professional Development and Training. Our core committee members are continuing to attend Professional Development provided by RISA at Rutgers. We've gone to five sessions so far, and these are monthly sessions around implicit bias, implications on educational systems, strategies for having conversations around racism and bias that impact decision-making and programs, and the impact of bias on students. We will continue with our training with RISA. We're really thinking about how that impacts us as educational leaders and what professional development would ensue from there for the rest of the administrators. In addition, one of our subcommittees is the Professional Development and Training Subcommittee. That committee has worked together with the different members of our supervisory staff, and we've gotten feedback from different stakeholders in the community around our climate surveys. So these are Diversity Equity Access Climate Surveys, long, long word. So we've developed a draft of surveys for staff, for students, and for parents, and for administrators, so it's four sets of surveys. The surveys come in two sections. One section is around school climate, and the other section is around diversity, equity, and access. Dr. Casco asked us to combine those because we didn't want to send too many surveys out to our parents and to our faculty and staff, so we were able to do that well. We are planning on sending that out in February, as soon as we finish getting the final levels of feedback. We've received feedback this week, we've already incorporated that, and tomorrow, when we meet with the Diversity Equity and Access Committee at large, we'll share the surveys and get final feedback. We've shared it with the association leadership as well, some teachers, and first week of February is our goal to send those out. Some of the resources where we got our questions from were the New Jersey Department of Education, the school climate surveys that they published, teaching tolerance, and the Center for Racial Justice. So that's how we kind of compiled. And of course, our administrators, some of our supervisors gave us a lot of feedback, and then our core committee team, and also reaching into the RISA Professional Development helped us develop those questions. After we administer the survey the first week in February, our intention is to receive the results and then prepare a, a presentation. We'll submit that to the superintendent, and then he'll plan for a presentation for the board sometime in February. In addition to that, we are looking at how we are going to provide professional development for our staff. And while our long-term planning is for next year, that's what we're really planning for through the Diversity Committee, we have been reaching out to the various organizations through our subcommittee to find out what types of professional development exist, what types of professional development exist for a district this size, right? Because when we invite someone to come assist us in this endeavor, it's going to need to come with a host of people who can provide the professional development for all of our staff. So first, what are we thinking about? We're thinking about professional development in the area of facilitating critical conversations. So what, what does this sound like? So this would be helping teachers explore strategies for facilitating critical conversations with students and colleagues, engaging in personal reflection and examining some common beliefs, potential biases that can affect our own ability to engage in productive conversations, learning strategies for creating supportive learning environments that encourage risk-taking during critical conversations, and investigating methods of teaching about implicit bias, race, and other critical topics. So that's the direction that we are going to frame the professional development around. Our hope is to, right now, our, our top two people or two groups that we're working with that are able to provide PD for our staff is Teaching Tolerance and the Center for Racial Justice. So we're talking to them, receiving proposals, understanding what's available, and of course, cost. The intention is for this year to provide training to administrators and to a core group of teachers at our May District In-Service Training. If at, if at all possible, if we could have, you know, maybe a guest speaker come in to do the entire staff for, on, in May for, for an hour, we would love that. We would have to see the cost. So those are our ideas so far. The Subcommittee for Professional Development will be working through this tomorrow to continue to plan. In terms of the other subcommittees, Curriculum Instruction and Recruitment and Hiring, at our last Subcommittee meeting in December, what we did was we began to look at data. So for our area curriculum, we looked at entry data into honors and AP and into GNT and all of those areas, and we're looking at data for performance and closing achievement gaps. And then we're going to look to formulate some objectives or some clear goals for next year to create an action plan on addressing those. And then the recruitment and hiring, they began to look at data in terms of who's employed in our schools and what are the demographics, and what is our hiring process like, and how do we reach out into our communities and partner with our universities so that we can hire staff at a greater level of diversity. And I think that's where we are. Tomorrow, we'll meet as a Subcommittee, and then we'll come back to the board and, and have a presentation in February.
Did you want to, just from a curricular perspective, just kind of herald some of the, as we come into February, Black History Month, and we've created a, a, a pretty comprehensive document from all the schools and departments of the activities that'll be ongoing over the course of that month, and certainly, we, it would take a lot of time to read through those, and obviously, you've shared them with the board. Anything you want to highlight from those activities?
I think that all of the schools are involved in Black History Month and in Hispanic Heritage Month. We have put together a document by content level, by grade level, of all of the activities that are taking place. I think the first thing we'd want to say or share with the board and with the public is that although we celebrate in February, we are definitely being very deliberate about making sure that history, Black History, Hispanic Heritage is all throughout the year, right? It's woven into our curriculum. It may be highlighted in February, but it's certainly something that's very critical and important for us to include and integrate into our curriculum and to have at the forefront of all of our conversations. When we're thinking about presentations, and there's been assemblies and, and opportunities for the staff to sure that we recognize the pathways that have been opened to us. And I think that at the upper levels, then we see some very concrete advocacy, social justice in writing, in projects that are taking place. And I think that does an overall highlight without being very specific. Good? And so then you do have this published, and we'll publish it online as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. I think you took my.
Do you want to do board questions? Do we have questions for Ms. Mendez, or do you want to get through the rest of your report?
We're at the wall of the board. If the board had questions.
Anybody have questions for Ms. Mendez? Mr. Rothstein?
No, no, it all sounds amazing. Looking forward to seeing the report.
Ms. Triggs Gals.
Thank you. That was very inclusive. I do have some comments and a couple of questions. When that survey goes out, will you be citing those sources so staff knows, everybody knows that you use Teaching Tolerance and Center for Social Justice?
Yes, we've just placed them at the bottom of the survey as a resource.
Great. Now, we did budget money, the board did, for PD this year. And so did I understand you to say that for this school year, we're doing all of the administrators and a core group of teachers?
Yes.
And possibly a speaker if we have money left for May?
If there's enough.
Yeah, I really hope we have enough money left.
Yet.
Because that was something that we were very adamant about last year, that we wanted PD for the staff this year. So, I don't know, Dr. Kascón's talking about grants, and maybe we can beg.
We're good at that.
Borrow. And there are a lot of good speakers out there, and I just wanted to mention the Martin Luther King Program, and I'll mention that later. But we have a wealth of talented people here in town who do diversity training. So that's an avenue that we might want to explore. And the other thing, the Black History Month activities, and we reflected on the Hispanic Heritage Month activities. Happy to see that we've got some critical thinking activities and using some creativity. I hope we can move away from students being assigned a famous Hispanic person or a famous African-American and read and research. I mean, that's so old and boring. I hope that we encourage our teachers and our schools to think outside the box. You can do that research, but then do something with it other than just handing in a report. And we have a lot of living legends out here. It doesn't all have to be Rosa Parks and Harriet Tubman and George Washington Carver. We've got a lot of folks who are making huge contributions. So we can do some current research, you know? Google lets you find everybody these days. But, well done, and thank you very much. Oh, and in February, are we also going to get Dr. Kascón an Amistad?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think it's important because, you know, Ms. Mendez and I had a good conversation about this the other day, and I think it's important for the public, not only so that they can have a window into what we're currently doing, but also where we're going, right? And what our vision is for that. But also, I think, to provide some clarity for the public as to what that is, what the Amistad mandate is. It's funny, what I said to Ms. Mendez is it's really a much more multifaceted, you know, kind of mandate with kind of far-reaching curricularly, but its name, I think, tends to kind of pigeonhole that in a lot of people's minds because it's not simply about slavery, right? Yet, the Amistad is a historical event that, you know, that is really, you know, speaks mostly to that slavery experience through that historical event. So we look forward to providing a clarification and education to the public about what it really is, what we're doing, and what our vision is for really expanding and enhancing that as well in February, which I think is appropriate a month as any to do it.
And we'll have some teachers visiting with us to present to the board, to share how they actually integrated into the curriculum.
That'll be very much appreciated because we're looking for more than just seeing the curriculum alignment on paper. So, thank you.
Ms. Marklenger.
So just a logistical question. The survey that's going to be out, will the board see that beforehand, before it goes out to the public? That's the first question. And the second question is, how is it being distributed? And are we doing, if they're doing it online, will there be a Spanish version that goes out as well as English?
I would think so, yes.
Spanish, yes. Do you?
Right, so absolutely. We, you know, we've received some feedback, some board-level feedback, and absolutely the final draft will certainly be, you know, run past the board.
And we'll post it on our website and through social media. That's how parents and the community will have, and students and staff will get that via email. It is in a Google form, so that's who we're using as our platform.
Now, since we are here in public, I will say, a survey is only as good as the number, as the statistical significance of the dataset. And, you know, we were a little bit disappointed in our response to, you know, the previous surveys we put out. And so really, just kind of a preliminary plug, it's really important for folks to take the time to fill this out. It's not to say that if we have a limited sample size, we can't glean something from it, but the more people that fill it out, the more reliable and valid the findings are, or rather, the data is, and therefore, the findings. So, thanks in advance.
Just one more question, I'm sorry. Have we thought about sending it out to the wider community for folks that may not have students in the school system? Because it could give you an insight into maybe some of the, I know one of the things that Mr. Robertson had brought up last year was some folks that he had spoken with, their concern about not sending their children to these, the schools in West Orange was because of some of the access equity and diversity issues. So I was just wondering if we had considered sending it out to the community as a whole just to get some other input and insight as to maybe why maybe that folks don't feel they have the same access or that we're not as diverse in our curriculum as we think we are.
I don't know that we have considered that. It's certainly something that we can address with the larger committee tomorrow and get some ideas since the committee does represent community members. And then we'll brainstorm and see what we can do.
Ms. Kinnip.
Nope, sounds good. I look forward to seeing the results. So, thank you for your reference.
Thank you. All right. HIV? Okay. So pursuant to our standard monthly operating procedure, we have, as I provided to you, an HIV report. We have seven cases which were brought forth, six of which were found to not have been confirmed as HIV, one as confirmed. Those are for your initial review and then would ultimately be voted on at the February 10th meeting. As I've, you know, indicated in the past, if you had any specific questions between now and the 10th, I'm happy to provide that for you. I have reviewed all of the investigations and findings, and I'm in agreement with the findings of the anti-bullying specialists. And we have, for your approval, a motion for the reports that were brought forth at the December 16th board meeting. There are four, three of which were confirmed, one which is not for approval on tonight's agenda.
Are we going to do that now, or do we go to the end?
Well, that's relevant.
Do the end. Can we do the audit?
Yes, the moment we've all been waiting for. Mr. Calabano?
So we have Cheryl Nicolosi here from Lurch Fincy and Higgins. She'll give us a brief report where we are with our surplus, recommendations, et cetera.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I don't know if it's the moment you've all been waiting for, but I will try to make it as exciting as possible, keep it brief as well. This is the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2019. Our audit produces two reports. One of them is known as the CAFR, it's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's where all your financial statements are, as well as any related footnotes. The other document that we produce is known as the Auditor's Management Report. That's that thin report that you have. That is the summary of all audit findings that we have during the audit. I just would like to say that as far as the audit goes, the district received what is called an unmodified opinion. That is the highest audit opinion that you could have. That means that the financial statements are materially correct, and our job as the auditors to give the opinion and our opinions that the financial statements are unmodified. I'm just going to briefly go over your general fund, that is your chief operating fund. So if you have Exhibit B1, that's your balance sheet. Briefly, you ended the year with total fund balance for a general fund of about $1.7 million. That is composed of your capital reserve, which has $569 in it, and then there's two components to your purchases on order, or these are your encumbrances. They total approximately $253,000. There's $2.2 million of what we call designated for subsequent years budget. That's the surplus that you were using in your current budget that you're in, your 1920 budget. On a modified accrual basis, that leaves you with an unassigned balance. If you see it, it's a negative $744,000. That is not indicative of any financial need. The state historically delays the last two state aid payments, and they also do not pay you your extraordinary aid in the 1819 school year. They actually budget it in next year's budget for them. So under GAAP, you are not allowed to realize it in your budget, but on a budgetary basis, which is what you use when you do your budget, the district has $2.8 million of unassigned fund balance. I do need to point out, though, that 2.8 is below the 2% that you are allowed to have. The state mandates that you can only keep 2%. Your 2% would actually be a little over $4 million, and you're currently sitting at unassigned of 2.8 million. The other funds that you see on your B1, special revenues where you hold all your grants, capital projects is where you do any sort of lease purchases, and this year you did lease purchases for vehicles, and your debt service fund is just where you pay your long-term bonded debt from. So if there's no questions on the financials, I'm going to jump to the AMR, the management report, the findings and recommendations.
I just have one comment. You spoke about the designated amount that's in this year's budget, the $2.250,000. For years now, we've been relying on $2.5 million from surplus each year to balance the budget. We started with last year's to start reducing it by $250,000 each year. And we did it for the current budget. We're planning to do the same thing for the following budget until we can come off of this commitment each year that we're taking out of surplus because our goal is to at least keep the 2% that we're allowed to keep.
With regards to recommendations, under school purchasing programming, programs, we are recommending that specific vendors utilized by the district for contracts in excess of the bid threshold awarded through state contracts and other cooperative agreements be formally approved by board resolution. Under student body activities, all checks written from the high school account contain two authorized signatures. Payment authorization request forms for the high school athletic account contain all required proper approval signatures. Supporting documentation be obtained for all disbursements made from the Redwood Elementary School account. All deposits for the Redwood Elementary School account be made in a timely manner. Disbursement request forms be utilized for the Gregory Elementary School account. And finally, field trip logs maintained by the Kelly Elementary School account include date funds were received and also specify which receipts are included in a batch deposit if applicable. There are no findings which we consider financial statement findings. There are also no findings related to state or federal awards. These are all general comments, and the one finding is a repeat with regards to the high school athletic account. That's denoted with the asterisk.
So regarding the first comment, we actually, the board approved the resolution approving those vendors that exceeded the bid threshold in December. And that would be an ongoing basis because if it happens throughout the year, then we'll present another resolution. Student bodies, I'm working with the schools, the high school, we did two checks, the bursar was on vacation, and the two individuals that took over during that time, they made a mistake and didn't get two signatures. So that'll be rectified. Redwood, there's a new administrative assistant that took over. So now she's gotten through one year, she's learned the whole system. I was supposed to meet with her this past Friday, but she was ill, so she canceled the meeting, but I'll meet up with her again. And then the other recommendations, I'm going to, I'm working with the schools and the athletic director, and I'm going to send out periodic reminders that, you know, this is what you need to do, and if I have to go over and look at the accounts, I'll do, you know, interim checkups. But overall, I consider it's a really good audit. Most school districts have student activities.
Student activity findings are very common.
So if you take the student activities out of it, then you're only really looking at one recommendation, which we just resolved in December, so.
Yeah, and for a district your size, that's great.
Yep, just for public record, would you concur with Mr. Calabano's assessment relative to, from your perspective, relative to other audits and districts, you know, the overall assessment and quality of the audit for us?
Absolutely. It is very common, almost all audits will contain findings related to student body activities because those are usually things that are not normally within the board office. You have other entities controlling it, so controls there sometimes can need improvement. So it's very common for districts to have findings regarding student activities. And to have one purchasing recommendation for the amount of purchasing that you do is real great, yeah.
And that's with the other purchasing department, right?
Yes, you do not have one.
Anything from the board? Ms. Rothstein? Any questions?
No, no. I think it's impressive.
Ms. Triggs Gals.
No, but thank you.
Ms. Marklenger.
But thank you.
Ms. Tenplis.
Thank you. Thanks for the report.
And thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
All right. Up next, you have that resolution, and then we have our committee reports.
Yes. Keeping with the, I'm going to come up to the podium here so I can speak directly to the board. So, in addition to Human Trafficking Awareness Month, it's also Board of Education Recognition Month. And so I'd like to first say that, if you hadn't been aware, that our board was recognized recently by the West Orange Town Council. Was that just last week we were there?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Yeah, so we were there last week where they were recognized, and that was, unfortunately, Ms. Marklenger couldn't join us. She had a family commitment, I think, your sister or?
Sister's getting married this weekend.
Right, so she was busy getting prepared for that, so we missed her there, but, you know, that was very nice. And so, you know, as Mr. Calabano or Cabinet, you know, were talking about, I said, you know, and I asked Mr. Calabano, I said, have we ever recognized our board, you know, internally? And best of his recollection, that had never happened. So, you know, we thought this would be a nice opportunity in January, recognition of Board of Education Month, to, you know, recognize the effort of our board members. We have two new board members. You know, I am astounded on a weekly basis, because I throw a lot at the board on a weekly basis, my weekly updates, and they spend a lot, I mean, countless, countless hours. And the pay's not that great. In fact, it's not, there's no pay at all. It's volunteer work, which is incredible. When you think about the responsibility of this body, the work they do is really, the least we can do is have a month where we recognize their efforts. And so we do have a motion, which, shall I read into the record there, Mr. Calabano?
Sure.
Okay. West Orange. 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 Okay. "West Orange, whereas while the Senator, while the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act requires all meetings of the West Orange Board of Education to be held in public, sets forth nine types of matters..." Am I reading the wrong motion?
Yes, you are.
Yes, I am.
You're sending us to close.
Let's try this again. Maybe I need new glasses. Okay, recommend approval of the following resolution commending the efforts of the members of the Board of Education during School Board Recognition Month, and to urge the public to support efforts to improve education. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas, the West Orange Board of Education is one of 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas, the West Orange Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas, New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas, New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no remuneration, remuneration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas, boards of education provide accountability to the public. They communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores, and the preparation for college through advanced placement offerings and SAT assessments. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Orange Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the West Orange Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staff toward the advancement of our children's education."
Thank you very much, Dr. Kascón. May we have a motion to move that resolution?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
So I just question, is this just on the resolution, or?
Right, just on the resolution.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggs, Gals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Before we get on with the policy, I think we'll do our committee reports, because we put that in this section of the agenda. I don't remember, Mr. Rothstein, if you have one to give?
Uh, okay. I'm very happy that I will be serving on the PR, the Board PR Committee with Ms. Merklinger. We are in the process of scheduling our first meeting, and so nothing to report right now, but very much looking forward to getting started on that work.
All right. Ms. Triggs, Gals?
Okay. Ms. Merklinger and I are on the Policy Committee, and we actually have a meeting scheduled for February 3rd, and at that time with Dr. Kascón, we'll be reviewing all mandated policies which are statutorily driven, which means that those policies are standard language-based, and they're based on state legislation. Just want to remind everyone that we moved to a policy management company called Strauss Esme last year, and it is our desire to move as swiftly and as thoroughly as possible to get our policies moved over to Strauss Esme. One of the advantages of that is that they have a fabulous link. So it's very user-friendly. So when you want to look up a policy, it's very easy to go to the board website, click on the board policy. You can do that now, but Strauss Esme has made it much more user-friendly. And so that's something that we are very interested in doing, and that is one of our board goals. And so we hope to, in the next few months, be able to move along a number of policies and bring it before the board, which is our primary function as a board, as policy. I'm also going to report out on the Essex County School Boards Association. Mr. Alper and I are on that committee, and I encouraged Ms. Tunncliff to go with me to our last meeting, and it was held at Bloomfield High School, and the topic was STEAM and sustainability. And STEAM, we know as science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And in October, when the New Jersey School Boards has their convention, but we call it a workshop, there is a huge, huge presentation called Steam Tank, and kids from all over the state who have worked on sustainability projects get an opportunity to present those. And so we had a little presentation the other day. Bloomfield High School students presented there, and help me, Ms. Tunncliff, it was recyclable water. So from your dishwasher, your washing machine, instead of losing that water, it would go into a tank
Yes.
and be filtered and cleaned and able to reuse. So these were high school students who came up with that idea. And so, Dr. Kascón, you told me that we have a team.
We do. Yes, we, what I understand from speaking with Mr. Del Garcia, we compete in the steam tank competition annually.
Great. And so there is also a program for board members. Put the team in STEAM, and it gives, it's team-building activities for boards of ed. So President Alper, I'm going to recommend that we put that on our training workshop coming up soon. And I think that's it for committee reports.
All right. Ms. Merklinger?
Sure. So Ken and myself are the town liaisons, and we have the opportunity to work with Michelle Castellino, the town, town council, or town council president now.
Yeah.
So we're going to be partnering with the town on the annual Rialto Open House. That's scheduled for March 23rd. So more information to come on that. We're also going to be working with the town on some grants to improve Dagnan Field for both softball and baseball. The senior service department is working with our Mountaineer mentors, and that's on an intergenerational programming. And we'll have some future meetings coming up, and we'll report back on those.
All right, great. Ms. Tunncliff?
Okay. I am on the Legislative Committee for the Board, and at the Essex County School Board meeting, they gave us an update, so I thought I would just let you know of a couple things that I thought might be of interest. Regarding New Jersey education-related laws, there were two that were passed on. One was security and training for substitutes. That requires school security training for persons employed by public and non-public schools in substitute capacity, and for employees and volunteers of youth programs operated in school buildings. So this new requirement will become applicable in 2020 and 2021 school year. Another one is that they also passed Restorative Justice in Education Pilot Program, which establishes restorative justice in Education Pilot Program in Department of Education, and that program is to be established within six months. And there's a whole list of ones that are passed, and I can find a way to disseminate this somewhere else as well, if anyone's interested. But I did want to also let you know that there was one bill vetoed that was on the radar, and that's the property tax cap relief, which provides tax levy cap adjustment in 2020, 2021 through 2024 and 2025 school years for districts that are spending below adequacy and losing state aid. So that legislation had been sponsored by Senate President Steve Sweeney and would have allowed limited adjustments to the 2% tax levy cap for those school districts that are losing state aid and which, and, excuse me, aid, and which have been unable to raise their local share. So that's one of the ones that was vetoed. But there's a long list. Our legislation is quite busy here in New Jersey. So, thank you.
All right. And for myself and Ms. Triggs, Gals, on the negotiations committee, we're ramping up for the year. We're going to meet next week with the board attorney and insurance broker to get you up to speed on everything, and then we'll get together with the whole board to discuss the goals and parameters for the four contracts we'll be working on this year. That's both the full and part-time custodians, administrators, and the teachers' unions. And then we'll start scheduling some sessions. So that's our committee report. Up next, first reading of two new board policies. Did I skip that? I did. Questions from the public on agenda items first, sorry. I need new glasses. Any questions or comments from the public on anything on the agenda? Come on up. You'll have three minutes. Let us know what, your name and addresses, and, yep, right up in the podium. We'll put three minutes on the clock.
Good evening, esteemed board members. Happy New Year. My name is Kabira Myers, and am I to give my address, or?
Just your phone address.
Okay, so I live on Marion Drive here in West Orange. I should also mention that I am a co-founder and steering committee member of Essex Rising, but I'm not here on behalf of Essex Rising. I'm here to speak on my individual, or as an individual. I have a question about, I appreciate the report by the Diversity and Equity Committee representative, and I hope that I'm saying your committee's title properly, but I'm wondering if the board would consider implementing or making an implicit bias training mandatory for all teachers of the township of West Orange. As a mother of a black child, it's something that's urgently needed. As everyone is aware, the demographic of the teachers, especially at the elementary school level, is predominantly white and female. And it's hugely important that, you know, as a teacher, one recognizes the potential implicit bias that one has, the unconscious bias that one has, when one is teaching a child that doesn't necessarily look like him or her. You know, my son has had the unfortunate experience of, you know, sort of traumatic experience, had a traumatic experience with a substitute teacher who came in and treated him very poorly. And the principal of the school, you know, I don't want to give too much, you know, detail, but the principal of the school handled it excellently. And the good thing is that my son never had to interact with this particular individual again. But my fear if that, is that if this issue is not taken seriously, the unconscious bias issue amongst all of us, but in particular our teachers, you know, that something like that will happen again, if not to my son, to another child. And I understand that the committee is intending to start some sort of training amongst the school staff next year, but this is an urgent issue. And I want to make sure that it's not something that's voluntary, but that it's mandatory. It's hugely important. You know, my son was, is still, you know, facing the repercussions of that incident. It happened over a year ago. He's still, you know, traumatized because of it, and it has an impact on his ability to retain information, to learn. So I'm just hoping that it's something that the board would consider implementing immediately, or, you know, expeditiously, and as well as making it something mandatory. And then separately, I note that the idea of expanding the board to seven members has been contemplated by members of the community. I'm wondering if the board would consider that. You know, the board consists of five members right now. It's a ton of work just for five members, so I'm wondering if it's something, I didn't see it on the agenda, but I'm wondering if the board
Thank you.
would consider that in future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The snow is gone. My name is Amber Newsom. I live at 18 Arvin Road, and I have three children that go to West Orange, they're in West Orange schools. One is out of district. I'm also the board member of WOCPAC, which is the West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Council, very long word. And what we do is we help aid and guide the board of ed as far as, like, you know, policies and understanding what it is to help children and parents with, parents that have children with special needs, and especially bring up systematic issues. What I'm wanting to look at specifically is in the budget, is where it says for private schools, for disabled children, like tuition for private schools. It says we're allocating about $7.4 million. Is that correct? I think that's on page nine. I'm looking at page nine of any of them.
Are you on today's agenda, or are you?
I'm referring, well, the agenda lists the out-of-district schools and the tuition, and it doesn't seem to quite add up to the $7 million. Am I reading this wrong?
Do we answer that? We can, do you have anything else, or?
Well, it'll lead to my next question, because that's part of understanding how we're spending a lot of money out-of-district placement, and it actually kind of shows where we might be falling short of servicing our children with special needs. So I just wanted to be sure if I'm looking at the numbers right.
Gotcha. I see where you're getting, yeah. What you would see on today's budget would be the current contributions to that. Dr. Kascón, you can probably explain that a little bit better than I. This is what's currently happening, and then there's what's budgeted for the whole year for that.
Yeah, so what you see there are, and you'll notice the notations for, I believe, the majority of those, I'm not looking at the page, are, they say unbudgeted. And unbudgeted can represent students who have transferred into West Orange from other townships or other programs, which, which we don't, you know, we don't presently offer. Or in some cases, they can represent students who were in district and were recommended for out-of-district. Now, in terms of, listen, I think, you know, I speak for the board and Ms. Gogarty here, the director, when I say that, you know, our goal is to try and keep as many, you know, many students as possible right here, you know, in their, in their community schools. And, you know, I do believe that what I've asked kind of Ms. Gogarty to do is, is I really want you and your team to look at all of our out-of-district placements presently. And, you know, are we, are we able to trend out those out-of-district placements and say that they kind of fall into, you know, categories of classifications or types of disabilities? And if they do, you know, is that something where you could potentially build a homespun program, right? And I think that it's, you know, it's a balance, right? Because in the end, you know, from a financial standpoint, is, does it make good financial sense, not only to bring them back, but also to be, you know, fiscally responsible? At the end of the day, if we don't have a program that we feel can support that child, and sometimes we have students with very, as you know, with very, very specialized needs.
Right.
I think at the CPAC meeting, as a matter of fact, I heard a parent speak to the idea that the auditory sensitivity of their child, a facility like this, with the size of it and the sensory stimuli, just won't work. So it's not a function of that we don't offer the appropriate program here. It's just that the environment, the setting itself, is just simply not appropriate for that child's disability. And I think that there are cases when that is the case. But certainly, if it's a question of a program that we can offer and an environment that's appropriate, that's what we're trying to do. But in a direct answer to your question, that is a relatively small portion of what we pay out, and the budget was what we projected at the beginning of the year, and these unbudgeted costs are costs that we had not originally budgeted for. Mr. Calabano could speak better to where we end up finding that funding.
So when you look at page nine, the first column does represent $7.4 million. That's what's budgeted.
Yes.
Second column is what we've expended to date.
Already.
The third is what's encumbered, meaning what's still committed to pay, and the last column's the balance from that account.
Right. Okay. And then, but the out-of-district placements here on the agenda is not an extensive list of everyone that's out of district.
No. We have two of them throughout the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further on agenda items?
Good evening. Brent Draper.
Brent Draper Scott, Nestor Road, two children in West Orange Public Schools. Good evening, and thank you all for doing the work that you do, board members, and this Board Member Appreciation Month, and to Dr. Kascun, who I would like to just say, I think he's done a tremendous job as our superintendent. I wanted to appoint, just to address two things, one on the agenda and one that is not. Regarding the surveys, West Orange does a tremendous job of getting information out to the parents when there's a school closing, when there's a, be it due to weather or a threat or anything. And I think you might get more participation in the surveys if that information was sent out to parents as well, that the surveys are there. I constantly have the principals of schools and teachers plug that information at school gatherings. My son is in one of the orchestras at Redwood Elementary, and there are a lot of, we get a lot of information when we're there in the audience. I think if the principal or vice principal or whomever were to tell us also, by the way, here are the surveys, here's where to go find it, you would get more participation. So on that, that would just be what I have to say. What I really want to talk about is financial literacy. In the United States, the United States has one of the highest debt-to-income ratio of any country in America.
We really need to keep the agenda item comments just to what's on the agenda so that we keep things flowing along, but we can have you come back up during general public comment afterwards.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else on agenda items?
Good evening. Nerissa Swatviles, Prospect Avenue. In the spirit of School Board Recognition Month, I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work that you do and the number of hours that you dedicate to being on the school board. I know it's an incredible amount of work and how the work directly impacts our students. I'm a parent of a ninth and a 11th grader, and I'm also a member of West Orange Cares About Schools. I'm also an educator in a New Jersey public school, a little larger than West Orange. So I've been, so I've seen close up how another school board works, and one thing that I've noticed, and you may have seen this discussion on Facebook, is that the school district that I work for has the benefit of having a larger school board and can share more of the heavy workload. They have nine school board members as opposed to our five. And as a way to support the board and to benefit our students and the community as a whole, I was wondering if having a larger school board here in West Orange would serve the diverse values and needs of our community, and hoping that there would be some discussion of this in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street, parent of a fifth grader and a ninth grader at the high school. The fifth grader's not at the high school, he's in elementary school. But, and also a founding member of West Orange Cares About Schools. And so I do have to commend you. I felt like I learned more about what committee work you did, and I've been coming for like five years, you know, like fairly regularly, and that was, so please keep doing that because I really feel like I know more of what you're doing, which is great, which is part of the transparency and communication. I also wanted to sort of piggyback off of what Nerissa said, and one of our, one of our world cast members, Nicole Ruffo, prepared, just so that you guys can see, because I also want to recognize your great work as a school board, and also acknowledge that there's just so much work to do. And so she put together just the average number of students in townships near us and number of board members, and whether or not they're elected or appointed, and if I could hand this out to each of you, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just for you to look at, just so that we can, because we want to support the work that you're doing to make sure that we can get the most out of our.
Hi, Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. I had a quick comment about the survey. I'm looking forward to seeing that come out, and we'll definitely do our part to promote it and try and get you the responses that make this a worthwhile endeavor that can help teach us all something about where we are and where we need to go from here. My question, I thought Ms. Merklinger had an excellent point about making a special point to reach out to other families who may have chosen to send their kids outside of the district, because, you know, their perception obviously is also very important and would be useful to have. I was wondering, for the part that's aimed at students, is this directed toward high school students? Is this going to be promoted, or will middle school or younger kids even be made aware of, aware of it? And I was going to suggest that former students might also be a great reference. Kids who've graduated, who may be still in town, working, going to school, may have gone somewhere else to school or to work, now have the benefit of a different experience that can help them reflect on what they saw here and what their experience was here that could be useful also. And then just to say thank you to all of you and to your predecessors, too, this is such a tremendous amount of work that you do, and I know that you all come to it, you know, with pure hearts, hoping only to help. And I know you take the brunt of a lot of criticism, and it's occasionally come from me, but I know, we may disagree, but I really respect and appreciate what you do. And to be back again, though, on what Nerissa and Rachel said, the five of you are doing a job that really probably needs more people. And we have a big and very diverse and talented community here. We have a lot of other people who I think if they saw the opportunity, would be happy to step up and take a larger role to help the district. And the fact is, looking at what you do, I don't know how any of you do this and manage the rest of your life. The way it's set up now, really many, many people couldn't, couldn't even think about running for school board because of the amount of work that you're each doing. And to spread that out really opens it up to more people who could participate. Thank you.
Good evening. Ruth Aivar, 9 Mount Vernon Avenue, parent of a former graduation from West Orange High School, 2018, and an eighth grader at Liberty. And so wanted to definitely echo the expansion of the board. I think it makes sense racially, ethnically, and also operationally to expand and build capacity on the parent base that we have in the community, just to put it out there. I also want to piggyback also on the comments on the survey. I think that initially, the climate survey that was sent out, yes, it was translated, but I think we need to be a little bit more strategic on how we engage particularly bilingual families. Just sending a survey, a link, a Google, is not going to be enough. I think we need to do more, whether it's school-based, whether it's having a forum at those schools where there's a lot of bilingual parents. I've offered my services to come and translate. I am a certified translator. That service was never accepted from the district, and I'm just thinking, how can we as parents build capacity and become partners when we are reaching out for help? Just putting it out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Robyn Iserlitz, 22 Yale Terrace, and West Orange Cares About Schools. First, the survey really quickly. I tried to fill out the parent survey that went out earlier in the year. I think I emailed you, Dr. Kascun, but it was probably lost in a lot of emails, or maybe we did have a conversation, I forgot. But I think the way that that survey was set up was, it was quite dependent on the level of where your child was, and if you had children in different levels, you couldn't really do the survey. So I'm wondering that that might have something to do with the low response rate. So just in this next survey, if we can be really careful about targeting who we want to hear from and what level they're in, I think you'll get more participation. And for my second comments to follow up, I wanted to thank you all publicly for all the many hours and time and energy that you spend to this community of ours. I'm elated that Governor Murphy and our West Orange Town Council and Dr. Kascun has recognized your service to this community, and thank you, really. It is my understanding that the Open Public Meetings Act stipulates that a meeting attended by an effective majority of the board, which would be, in our case, three, would be required to be open to the public. So all of the committees that you reported on tonight, I, we noticed, had two people on those committees. So it would seem to me that expanding the board to having more people on more committees would help, again, spread the work out and reduce some of the workload and potentially get more done. I imagine there's a lot of things that don't get done each year, just because there's only so many hours in the day and so many hands and minds working together. So just putting that out there, we look forward to opening this discussion more as we move along, and thanks again for all that you do.
Thank you.
Sure, tall, everyone, different sizes. Nicole Ruffo, 4 Overlook Avenue. I just wanted to echo the comments about the Board Recognition Month. One thing I've come to learn over coming to these Board of Ed meetings and seeing the work that all of you do, is that we see this much of what you do, right? This meeting is this much. So there's tons of papers that you're reading, documents, you are going to trainings, you are attending many other meetings, you're going to school events, you are having phone conversations with each other, emailing each other, working through things out, and then reporting to your friends over here. So I could only imagine how many hours that is, and for people who have a full-time job, it's a lot. So we thank you. I'm so glad, again, that the Governor Murphy's article that he put out was so nice, the quote that he wrote, saying, "Local boards of education provide crucial guidance by setting the policies and goals for the entire school district." And then I love this, because I love democracy. "School boards are democracy in action." I love that. "No other public official, elected or appointed, has a greater impact on the lives of children than the local school board member." That's pretty powerful. So I also echo the thinking about how many board members we have. Most board, as you can see on the document, have about seven or nine with the same amount of students that we have. So it's just a good thought to look at. Also, one thing that has come up many times we've been asking for, and I think we should, we're going to keep asking for, is to have our meetings streamed live. There are so many families of West Orange schools, families who would love to be able to see what's happening in this meeting, they would have loved to hear everything that's going on. They are commuting still home from the city on a train, stuck probably. They are at a, you know, game, they are coaching, whatever they're doing, to be able to watch it at 10 o'clock tonight, to be able to watch it live, having it go on whenever it goes on a week or two later is too late. Things have moved on in this world, the news is like this, right? So we, live streaming, many districts do it, we can do it too. The Black History Month, I just wanted to quickly mention that my son last year did a wonderful project that I think is a great example of what our district is doing. Third grade, he was illus, or looking at Kadir Nelson, who is a modern-day black man who's living, illustrator, incredible, beautiful illustrations. And he did this incredible project collaboratively with other students on Henry's Freedom Box, which is a book that he wrote and, or illustrated. And then we got to meet Kadir Nelson when he came to Maplewood, and my son got to show him the project. So I would say that this is the kind of stuff that can happen in real life. And then quickly with the Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee, I sent Dr. Kascun something that's happening in Newton, Massachusetts, in my friend's district, where they're doing courageous conversations on race, and I'm going to send that to your committee as well. But they are having incredible programs, talking to children on race, resources available to help parents and families negotiate or navigate the issues. And then also pairing that with SEL, the unconscious bias training, what's more important than our kids' emotional health and unconscious bias training?
Thank you very much. Anyone further on agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Thank you very much, everyone, for your kind words and comments. Up next, we have two policies for first reading. Do you want to bring those forward because they came from?
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say a few words about them. So these were just a little bit about the policies and then just kind of the process. So these were policies that we had begun work on prior to the reorganization of the board. In fact, the second policy, public complaint and grievance, actually had gone through a first reading with the previous board. We're putting it back through a first reading because we do have new board members. You know, both of those policies have been viewed by the board. We've had, you know, internal stakeholders, we've had some, some external eyes on it. In fact, I know we have some, some friends from the community here representing amongst other groups, you know, kind of allergy advocates, you know, children with life-threatening allergies. So just to be clear, these are first readings. There is no time limit between first and second reading, and so we are, we've gotten some great feedback. I want to thank the board, you know, for providing some really, really detailed feedback, particularly on the, the allergy policy. So Ms. Triggs Scales, Ms. Merklinger, and I will be processing that feedback at the Policy Committee meeting on the third. I've shared with Ms. Gogarty, who'd been working with the district nurses on that. You know, so prior to bringing forth for a second reading, you know, we will put it through. We're glad to have offered it to the public here as well. So our friends, you know, Ms. Ruffo, I know, you know, you have a very vested interest in that, we have some others here in the audience. So, you know, if there's anything that jumps out at you about as well, we're certainly open to family and parent feedback to help perform our efforts. And as far as the public complaint and grievance policy, really, this is just to provide members of the community an alternative process to bring forth a complaint or a grievance, you know, regardless of what that, you know, we had a parent come, come forward earlier in the evening, you know, had an issue, you know, with a substitute teacher, it might be a regular teacher. Right now, we really don't, you know, the default mechanism is an HIB investigation, but oftentimes, that's not really an appropriate, you know, investigative means. This is really, when you break it down, this policy, in essence, just provides a framework for conflict mediation, is really what it is. And it starts with the parties who are most immediately involved, really just sitting down and having a conversation, right? And I see that oftentimes, things will come to my desk, and I'll just ask a simple question. I'll say, I know it's a tough conversation, but have you had that conversation with the person with whom you're aggrieved? And oftentimes, it doesn't happen. And, you know, even if that happens in an immediate setting, we need to be able to sit down and have tough conversations and have them as adults, and I understand that that's difficult. And that's really what the, what the complaint does, that policy does. It gives people the opportunity to resolve it at level one, and if they're not able to do that, then it can move up, and really, it's just mediated by other folks to try and bring some resolution to it. Now, just a quick word about regulations, because we do intend to bring forth regulations into our manual, but just, just as a point of order, regulations are not approved by the board. They kind of are behind the policy and really provide a set of, of recommended procedural guidelines that are helpful. We are reviewing those as well. In fact, we got one piece of feedback on a regulation relative to one of those, those policies. And so we are reviewing those procedural guidelines to ensure that we're comfortable with them, but they aren't board-approved officially, because sometimes, when it comes to the procedural operation, it's good to have some administrative discretion, you know, in the best interest sometimes of the complainant, in the best interest of both. And so to have that flexibility is helpful. So that's just a word where we are procedurally with these policies. Ms. Triggs Scales, anything you wanted to add? Ms. Merklinger, as members of the Policy Committee?
I think you did a fabulous job, Dr. Kascun.
That is all I have, Mr. Alper.
Great. So, you know, by, you know, introducing these and motioning and seconding and approving them, they're then, you know, well, they already are because they're on the agenda, but they're then out there for the public to be able to make comments as well, which we encourage you to do. There's both a form on the website under the Policy section, or you can just email us, it's all going to go to the same place anyway, but we, you know, strongly encourage you to do that. If you could do it in advance of the third, before the Policy Committee actually next meets, so much the better. And then, you know, we'll see what comes up in second reading. So may I have a motion for both of these policies, number 5331 and 9130?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Calabana.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggs Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, moving on. Personnel, items one through five. May I have a motion?
So move.
Would someone take a second?
Second.
All right.
Any discussion, Mr. Alper?
I was about to get to that. For retirements, I'd like to highlight, all of note, Margarita Rudd at Liberty, 19 years, Susan Wright here at the high school for 21 years, Jeanne Torito at Gregory, 25 years, and, you know, she's been there since, obviously, since before my kids got there. It's, I'm going to miss her. And, you know, I think she might actually still be here. Dr. Pilera, unbelievable, 33 years. You're sure? Before we, before we vote, you're sure? we vote, you're sure? All right. Any further discussion?
That one just came as a shock. Big shoes to fill there.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes, with the exception of Jeanne Kivon. That is my cousin.
And that's an abstention?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes. I'm sorry, just a question as well. Does this include item H?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I would just like to abstain on one line item there for Ms. Ferlot Owaski.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, up next, curriculum and instruction, items one through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, special services, items one through five, and business office, items one through 16. May I have a motion?
I'll motion. I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Is this where we're listed for business?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. So, we all know what we have to do.
Mm-hmm. Anyone who's on it? I just want to highlight item seven of the eight under Business Office, some non-public security aid and non-public technology aid, because I know that comes up as a question occasionally. Essentially, it's, it's pass-through money. It's state funding that goes into the district solely to be given out to the non-public schools. It's the way the state has it set up, so that's not coming from West Orange local funds whatsoever. But, you know, it looks like it the way the state makes you put it in the agendas, so it's always good to clarify. If nothing further, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, and I do need to make an abstention for reimbursement for fingerprinting.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes, with making an abstention for the reimbursement.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
With the abstention?
Yes. Well, that's what I was saying. All of us have to abstain for the workshop, right? Aren't we all listed in here?
Oh, is that on?
Oh, for the workshop, too.
Oh.
Oh, for the school business.
So, we need to do that again.
So, I'll reflect that in a minute. Abstention on a workshop and your reimbursement.
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes, with the exception of my approval for the upcoming workshop on the eighth.
Right.
All right. Reports, items one and two. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And seconded.
All right. Discussion? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, and then I believe I need to abstain for items that occurred in 2019 before I was sworn into the board.
Which is number two?
Yeah.
Under reports. Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes, with abstention on item number two.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And miscellaneous, items one and two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, petitions and hearings of citizens. Public comment, you can now come up and speak about anything you'd like for three minutes. Including financial literacy.
Good evening. Brent Draper Scott, 75 Nestra Road. I have two children in West Orange public schools, and they're doing quite well. And apologies for my faux pas earlier. I wanted to speak about financial literacy. Two things happened in 2019. One was that Acting Governor Sheila Oliver signed into law a law requiring personal financial literacy be taught in, in public schools in New Jersey. And 11 months later, West Orange Middle School Principal Dr. Ronnie Estrich, I believe is his name is pronounced, was awarded for advocating for personal financial literacy training. So, what I would like to know is what, first, I'll just say a few things. In the United States, we have one of the highest debt-to-income ratios of any country on the planet, one of the highest. The credit card industry, banks, and other lending institutions spend $17 billion, with a B, to seduce and lure young people into high-interest loans and credit cards. And according to the economics, economist, pardon me, Economists for Financial Education Organization, students who receive continued education in, in personal finance are better educated on financial matters, on financial literacy, everything from budgeting to saving and to not take out these high-interest loans and get trapped and seduced into them. So, what I would like to know is what is the West Orange curriculum on financial education? And more specifically, is it independent, as it is recommended, that it should not be a part of another math program? It should be independent, and it should be continuous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Duarte, 14 Cowing Place. What I'm here for is, at the gender-neutral bathrooms at the high school, I applaud the district for making all students feel comfortable where they go to school, where, you know, the restroom they use. But in an effort to do that, girls' rooms at the high school have been converted to gender-neutral bathrooms. They've not been retrofitted so that there's solid walls, floor to ceiling, you know, like they do in Europe in gender-neutral bathrooms. So, there have been incidents where girls are in the bathroom, boys are looking under, they're looking through the cracks. It's, it's a privacy issue for, for kids. And, you know, to take girls' rooms, I mean, we've all been in public places, like the lines are forever, and switch that to gender-neutral just kind of seems short-sighted, shall we say? Can this be corrected? Can the bathrooms be retrofitted so that everyone using the restrooms feels comfortable? And again, I applaud the district for making sure that, you know, everyone is comfortable, but in an effort to make some groups feel comfortable, other groups now feel uncomfortable.
Hi, good evening. Leslie Chung, Assistant Principal at West Orange High School, also a West Orange resident at 1480 Pleasant Valley Way. Can I address her question?
Sure.
Oh.
Absolutely.
So, if I could speak with you, or where'd she go? There she goes. Ma'am, if I could just talk with you afterwards, because what you just brought up, I wasn't aware of. I'm one of the administrators at the high school. I wanted to say thank you all for approving my study this, this semester here in the district. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I'm just going to go talk with that.
We're looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hello, Gina Velasquez, 22 Corwell Circle. This is my first meeting, I think, for a while, so I would like to welcome the two new members. And I also haven't been here since the holiday party. I want to thank you all for coming to support. Thank you so much. It was a great event. And I'm here to thank Terry Trig Scales and Dr. Cascone for attending our meeting last week. It was a great booster. We needed that energy, that positive support. And it was an important meeting because we're planning our next two events. I want everybody to save the date. There, we are planning for, on March 5th, for anxiety and depression, and it's for all students and families inclusive, so it's not just for special needs. We will have more details regarding that. It's at the West Orange High School Auditorium from 7:00 to 9:00. And on March 25th will be our Resource Expo, so we plan to make that bigger and better than ever. That will be in the Turnoff Cafeteria. We're partnering with several community members. We're planning, partnering with some teachers to help us out. We happen, we're going to have children's care, refreshments, door prizes. We're going to do it big. So, I want you guys all to come out and support. I just want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I'm just coming here to say thank you to the board and to Ms. Mendez, who was here, up here last year when I came to ask for the Allergy Awareness Committee to start, whatever that meant. I just really wanted an allergy management plan for our district. And Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald, who's been along the way the whole time, and Dr. Cascone, who stepped in, and then all the board members who've been receiving my emails for the last year of all the information. And I just thank you for putting this as a priority. I know it takes time to get this done, but this is a really urgent matter, and it's a life-saving matter. This weekend, I saw the movie Little Women, and in the movie, one of the sisters is having a hard thing that she's going to have to do, and her sister says, "You can do it if you do it for others." So, all of you are here doing this for others. I'm here doing this for others, not just for my three children with life-threatening food allergies, but for all the West Orange food allergy families and for all the ones that are yet to come. So, I just thank you so much for getting this to this point, and I look forward to seeing it actually put into place and implemented in the schools properly, which I know is the hard part, but we can do it, right? So, thank you again so much. It really is a big deal. And I also wanted to make sure that this year, Allergy Awareness Week is May 12 through 18. And I know that there was an attempt to do some things for it last year, and really nothing happened. It was really kind of missed out in the district and is unfortunate because it's a great time to bring awareness. There's a group called Red Sneakers for Oakley. They have been contacting me over and over again, asking when my district is ready for them to come and help out, and they do things for free, so that's a great opportunity. Their food allergy research and education also has awesome events, and in fact, it's F-A-A-C-T. It also includes asthma. They have lots of resources, which I have sent all the board members who were on last year, and I'm happy to send to the new board members. Welcome. And to Dr. Cascone, because he probably didn't receive them last year. But there's lots of things to do in the high school, middle school, elementary school, age-appropriate activities. And even honestly, just one announcement every morning with a fact can be a great way to teach children about their friends. Because I've always said that the best way for us to keep our allergy-friendly, our friends safe at school is to get their friends involved. Because once your friends are involved, they are going to keep you safe. My children with food allergies always are talking about that. It's their friends who say, "Jack, something's at this table. Like, you shouldn't go over there." Because they know that, they care about their friends, and they don't want anything to happen to them. So, that's, that's where we're going. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Me again. Again, Amber Newsom, 18 Arvin Road. Again, I'm talking as a parent and as a board member of WOCPAC. And it links back to what I was talking about, the $7 million that we put aside for added district placement. Now, I have two children that are on the spectrum, one, and then one has ADD and is diagnosed with depression and anxiety. WOCPAC is also, is here to kind of point out systematic, systematic issues that are in the district, and part of that is anxiety and depression that these children are experiencing. I looked up on the CDC for, as of October 2018, it says, "One in six children aged 2 to 8 has a mental behavior, behavior or developmental disorder." It says about approximately 6.1 million have ages 2 to 17 have ADHD. About 4.5 million are diagnosed with behavioral disorder. And it says, "Three in four children 3 to 17 have depression and anxiety, and 73.8% of them have behavioral problems." I'm speaking not just, I guess, with special needs, but just also general ed who are experiencing these issues. I think I've come, as I talk to professionals, one of the solutions that I want to present to you is called Effective School Solutions. I don't know if you've heard of those schools. I was talking to Kristin. She's already on it. She's been looking into it. Effective School Solutions, it says here, it's really for, for children, for students with severe emotional behavioral challenges and the autism spectrum disorder, of course, children with depression and anxiety. And with that, it is a cost to bring that into the school. Our neighbors have schools like this. It's Montclair, Glen Ridge, South Orange. And what happens is that these children are actually have therapy in the school. You don't have to send them out. They have therapists either individually or in group, and it actually helps keep them in the system. It helps integrate them better instead of sending them out. So, I wanted to say, if you could look into that or support Kristin as she looks, I didn't mean to put you on blast, look into that as far as, as a possible solution to keeping our kids in district.
Definitely.
I mean, I wish my son could stay. Some children have to be sent out of districts, but in the long run, it'll probably save us some money and keep, and give the children a better experience in school.
Thank you very much. Anyone further? Seeing none, we'll close that out. Dr. Cascone, you want to?
Just a couple of quick things. First off, I just really want to thank, you know, all the parents, family members, community members that came out in various advocacy organizations you represent, tremendous, you know, educators, and just having, you know, that kind, I appreciate it. It's good, I mean, some really, really insightful feedback and critical feedback. You know, I, I don't, I don't shy away from that. I appreciate it. I appreciate a parent community that, that pushes us to be better and to be more thoughtful. It's what it's all about. And, and I know there's a lot of things you could be doing tonight at home. Sure, you'd love to be home with your children. I know I would. But, but this is, this is great work, and your, your participation in this process is really appreciated, so thank you. Have to give a shout out to Dr. Joe. Can't, can't leave Dr. Joe hanging there. Dr. Joanne Pilar, congratulations. You know, I pretty much liked Dr. Pilar that, you know, pretty much the instant I met her. And, you know, I see a lot of my own leadership style in Dr. Pilaris. She uses humor. You know, she doesn't take herself too seriously. Her staff, her staff and students know that they, you know, that she cares about them very deeply. But at the same time, she's a very knowledgeable educator, you know, who, who's able to really provide staff members with good guidance in how to improve and get them to really want to be intrinsically motivated to improve. You'll, you'll be missed on a lot of levels, but we had this conversation. I said, "Well, don't worry," I said, "because we've been trying to bring in some, some elementary substitute principals. So, after you do however many days you have to do, and we need somebody to come in and substitute elementary principal for us, if you're interested, that might be something that we could work out and keep your, keep your, your, your foot in practice a bit." But it's been a real pleasure working with you this short time, and, you know, I know you'll, I know you have important things that you need to tend to, and that also says a lot about you. So, thank you for the time that we've had to work together. I should talk a little bit about the school calendar. It was approved tonight, the school calendar for the, the 2021 school year. I actually like this calendar. I think it's, it's been informed by a lot of good feedback, board members, staff, you know, parents. And, you know, we start a bit later, but I think that'll be a good thing, both professionally and personally. It gives us kind of an opportunity to kind of ease into our preparations. We have a day and a half with staff officially the week, you know, the week before Labor Day to get our schools ready to open. That's one of the things I've heard from staff members is, like, when, like this year, we had that one day, and then boom, kids were here. And I think staff needs some time to kind of ramp up to be ready to do that. And I think that soft week before the Labor Day weekend will afford them that opportunity. Also, It also affords families an opportunity to kind of have one last kind of hurrah, you know, before it starts. Happy to build in an extra day in February to just create kind of like an abridged February break. It's not a full break, but it's at least four days, gives our staff and students an opportunity to just kind of rest up a little bit, another day for custodial staff to get our buildings, you know, sanitized and ready for kids to come back. You know, our spring break, you know, coincides with both the Passover holiday as well as the Easter holiday, which works out nicely. And, you know, I think it works out on a number of levels. So it's a calendar we feel pretty good about, and board approved it tonight, so that'll be getting publicized shortly. And that's all I have.
All right.
So thank you.
Thank you. Board member reports. Mr. Rothstein, anything exciting?
Thank you, yes, just a couple of things. I've got a microphone, do I have something to say? So just a couple of items, being a, well, this being School Board Appreciation Month, as a new member of the board, I just wanted to express an appreciation for an organization, the New Jersey School Board Association. I had a limited understanding of what it is that they offer members of school boards prior to being on the board. My knowledge started to grow as we got closer to the election. And now that I'm into it and really diving deep into what they offer, it's really a terrific organization, and I wanted to just mention it to the public because maybe like me, many of you aren't aware that this organization exists and what it is that they do. But many people spoke tonight about, made mention of the quantity of work that the school board takes on. It's not just about the quantity, though, it's also about the quality of attention and knowledge that the members bring to the work that we're doing. And so I just wanted to mention that this organization exists and give an appreciation for the work they do training all of us to serve the public well. Along those lines, just a note on a couple of upcoming events, I left my notes at home, so I had to do this from memory. I don't have the date, but several of us, I think all of us are attending the Equity Training Session coming up. It's on the 5th. Terrific, yeah, on Saturday, the 5th. And then also, I'll be attending the weekend training in mid, I think the third week of February, Governance One Training, which is for new board members to really acclimate us to a lot of the regulations and a lot of the processes. And I'm looking forward to learning and absorbing as much as I can, and again, doing the best job I can do in serving all of you. And then on a final note, one of my particular interests is in the arts, and I had the opportunity to attend the Roosevelt Middle School Choir Band and Orchestra Concert two weeks ago and was just completely blown away as I continue to be blown away by the incredible work that West Orange Schools does with arts. I'm constantly expecting to show up to these events and see the stereotypical middle school arts experience, and West Orange just exceeds my expectations over and over again, so just made me incredibly proud to see that. And that's all, thank you.
All right. Ms. Trig Scales. We usually go left, right, that's fine, we can skip.
I'm good. All right, good evening, everybody, especially those of you who are hanging in. I had the pleasure of attending the Martin Luther King Junior Program last Monday, the 20th, sponsored by the West Orange Human Relations Commission. It was a phenomenal program. Our students participated, the Jubilee Choir and the step teams performed. And we have one of our honorees who is here this evening, who just spoke, Ms. Myers, and our councilwoman, Matute Brown, was also honored as a community. She received the Honoring Our Community Award. And the keynote speaker, Dr. Maurice Stinnett, and he is the Vice President of Diversity and Inclusion at BSE Global. He gave a very riveting keynote. But he asked us just to remember three things, and, you know, you forget what people say. But he said, "Just remember three things." And one was A, as it relates to equity, to be an advocate. To advocate for our students and to make sure that they're all treated fairly and equitably. The second one is to be brave, because it's hard to do that. You have to have brave conversations when you talk about inequities and when you talk about bias. And he asked us to be steadfast in our bravery. And the third thing was compassionate, to please be compassionate. We're dealing with young people, we're molding minds, we're molding citizens, and so you can't do it without compassion. So I'm going to ask you to remember those ABCs. A for advocacy, B for bravery, and C for compassion. And so it was a very well-done program. And so later that week, I attended the New Jersey School Board's Guide to Safer Schools and was quite pleased to learn that our district is in really good shape based on safety and security and at-risk management. And we are really ahead of the norm. There were presentations, and I was like, "We're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're getting ready to do that." And so that was a nice feeling. And Dr. Cascone sent a whole team of people. I walked in and I was like, "Oh, West Orange is in the house." We must have had, I think I counted, six key staff members who were there. And so I know they said they were going to come back and you were going to debrief. And I was really pleased that, as I said, we have moved along in the right direction and are ahead of most districts. And this week, I will be attending the Governor's Town Hall in Livingston. And also, I'm going to Census 2020, West Orange's Complete Count Group. They're having a luncheon meeting on the 30th, and I think President Alper is going also. And I'm thinking that might be it. I'll probably forget something, but thanks, everybody, for being here.
All right. Ms. Berklinger.
So as Jennifer mentioned before, there are about 150 bills that were signed by Governor Murphy last week. And one that I was most excited to hear about was along with a lot of the ones that had to do with education, but the sale of flavor vape is being, is no longer allowed to students or youngsters. Not every part of that bill went through, but I was glad to see that we're taking some steps. I know West Orange High has a campaign going on, so if you saw the signs in the hallway, just promoting not to do it or not to start. So glad to see that we're taking some steps to really address that issue. It is becoming more of an epidemic like opioids, so glad to see that. I was a little disappointed to see that they weren't moving forward with the depression screenings, because I do think mental health is something that we need to focus on and work towards and letting students know that they have a place to feel safe. So hopefully, there's some more to that, but I guess we'll see. But we have a lot of great things going on here in West Orange, and I apologize ahead of time with my sister's wedding coming up this weekend, I've been super busy last weekend and this week, so I probably won't get to a lot of things this week, but we have so many things going on. So College and Career Planning Night is tomorrow evening, I think 20th is tomorrow. So it's interpreting your PSAT scores, year-to-year planning, FAFSA, I know that was a huge thing, financial planning for college is a big deal, so I encourage parents to go to that. Our Virtual Enterprise Team took first and third place in the Virtual Enterprise International Competition. So if you follow social media, you'll see some of the products that they put together, it's really great. Our Winter Color Guard Invitational was this past weekend, and that was great. It also featured our first-ever debut by our Adaptive Color Guard, so if you get the opportunity, I would say please go check them out. They are doing awesome things here at West Orange High School. I want to congratulate Coach Blake of our Track and Field Program and Cross Country. She was recognized as Colgate Women's Games Coach of the Year. The Unico is sponsoring a murder mystery dinner on February 21st, and that's to support our theater program here at West Orange High School. The Black History Month Scholarship Dinner is taking place on February 7th, and that starts at 6:00 PM. And if anyone attended last year, you know that was very moving, and the kids just did a phenomenal job, so I encourage you to attend that this year if you didn't go last year. The Send-Off to Nationals for our High School Cheerleading Team is next Tuesday, 4th, 7:00 PM in the Turnoff Cafeteria. I think it's just a nice way to send the girls off to their competition, especially with this Thursday being the Lead Her Forward National Girls and Women in Sports Recognition Night. Our basketball team will be hosting an event, so I encourage everyone to come out to that as well. There's also Evolving, which the High School Dance Program is performing in the auditorium at 7 o'clock that night as well. So a lot goes on here all at the same time, so it's pretty crazy. But the other great event happening this week on Friday night is the West Orange High School Wrestling Team will be taking on Caldwell at 4:00 PM, along with Seton Hall Prep and West Essex also wrestling, followed by Army versus Lehigh, I believe it's Lehigh, at 7:00 PM, and that's to honor Chris Morgan, or CJ Morgan. So encourage everyone to come out to that, we're expecting a large crowd. And I think that's it for events so far, if that wasn't enough.
Ms. Tackler.
I don't think I have anything to add, that's quite a comprehensive report from all of my colleagues. It's interesting being on the other side of the table, and I was thrilled to be able to work on the two new policies that we're going through first reading. You know, having a son who has some life-threatening allergies and having last April, having had my own anaphylactic shock and almost dying from that, it really puts things into perspective how important this work that we're doing is. As an adult, it was incredibly frightening to have that happen to myself. I can't even imagine what it is like for a child. And then also on the policy for public complaints and grievances, as a PTA president, we always try to route families who come to us to go through the protocol. So it's nice to see that we're developing a formal policy. And it brings to mind one of my favorite teachers, Brene Brown, who's a sociologist down at UT, and her work around difficult conversations. I just read her book, Dare to Lead, and she talks about these rumbles and having difficult conversations, but that if you don't have those conversations, you're not really living in your own kindness and compassion, and that you owe it to yourself and to the people you're working with to have those. So I hope that this policy fosters that within our district. So that's all for me tonight. And Dr. Joe, I'm going to be a mess when you leave, so in June, I know it was hard leaving Kelly School and all of the you've done, and I felt, you know, I was at that school for 10 years, so it's truly a loss to the district, and there are definitely some big shoes to fill, so, but I wish you well and much happiness in your retirement. I know you've got a few more months yet, but... Yes, I know. And thanks for everybody for your comments tonight, we appreciate it.
All right. Was that the Dr. King Celebration with Ms. Trig Scales, and that was really wonderful. Dr. Stinnett really did do a powerful, really good speech there, you know, it was great to see so many local honorees as well. Also on the 30th, I don't know if you plugged the Cheer Comedy Club Night that I think they're doing at the CAT Center. You'll see tickets available on Facebook, hopefully you'll see a lot of people there. Hopefully it's funny, because I've been convinced to buy a ticket, so I'm sure it'll be great. I think that's all I've got. We're all looking forward to getting together, that's the 8th, I think, actually, the Equity and Access, whatever that Saturday is, I'm pretty sure it's the 8th, I think the 5th's in the middle of that week up in whatchamacallit. We know where it is, I'm just drawing a blank at the moment. Maybe we should carpool since we're all going. That's it for tonight, our next board meeting will be at 7:30 PM at Liberty on February 10th. We're taking the show on the road, hope to see a lot of you there. Have a good night, get home safe.